This conference will now be recorded.
Is that you? Okay.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening once again to ask your guidance as the City Council, Mayor, Administrator, council members and city staff, and being committed to decisions for the benefit of the community's citizens. We also ask your blessings and protection of all first responders, including police, fire, medical, hospital clinics, who is working intervention so important now particularly, and all who put their lives at considerable risk in order to save ours. We pray that the vaccine will soon be filled up finally with the world of this terrible Chinese virus pandemic, and the need to return to our lives and livelihoods once more. Now, as we leave the chamber tonight, please watch over protect us until we can meet again, and also we pray your holiness.
Thanks, Kevin.
Please testify in the United States of America and give the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just as for all.
Arlene Rochell, please.
Lamon?
Here.
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 Richardson?
Here.
And Foster, is that right?
No, she's fostered on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here.
The Chief Harrell has a special award denied of pending. Do you want to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Matt pending this evening for one of our probationary firefighters is leaving probationary and becoming a firefighter, full plate firefighter. Matt Walski came to us in September last year, so he's just about completed a full year before he's made this point. He's got all his certifications, he's licensed DMT, and is ready to step up and get part of the state department, part of the fire service, the whole. He has his friend Kennedy, and his grandfather Joe, he's pending tonight. And as I said in past ceremonies, we've done it down here, pending is very important to people in the fire service, law enforcement, and the people that wear badges, both position of authority and also a sign of responsibility to the public we serve. And trying to give you a little hint, Joe, his grandfather, like who's pending, retired from the today department in 2003 after 34 years' service in the city today. Just for a second, go on, read this real quickly. Probationary firefighter Matthew Walski, age shift, today department, August 17th of 2020. Sir, this letter congratulate you on successful completion of your probationary favor in today department. You're now entitled to wear the badge and helmet shield of the today department as due to past and present members of this department. Always remember the long history of service for the citizens that they both represent, wear them with pride and with respect. As I told you, it will be based in your personal file at the station. So do you have a skin mask?
That one's what you wore.
Matthew, now you can get your ugly little on your helmet, turn it back in.
Now we have a special performance presentation, Jim Dest. Please step forward like your family if you'd like, and tell us some.
Four years and eight months ago, then became a six officer. That's what it was. I was a police sergeant for about 30 years. And building may be very next day.
Every time we call the hours, you make it up.
Jim's been an employee of ours in our department since April of those six. Like I said, he started the day after the fire complete, she was a lieutenant, a lieutenant in the police department. Jim's one of the reasons we see a city that's slowly at pleading for these, he's one of our rank ones, vital maintenance person. So it's going to be hard to replace, but walking into a building such as this when you see the condition it's been for somebody like Jim, prior to retiring earlier on, but he's always been available. That's the call off to be what's actually done with him. Jim is the work.
What are you going to do tomorrow?
Well, what do you want for a lot after breakfast? Well, I think we've got a change on.
Sure, yeah.
And it's kind of a first act to enjoy compliments of the city.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
So we have a motion to approve events from August 13 councilman.
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. And someone with the special boards of commission, the substance of city traffic advisory board, and finance owner. Have a motion.
Let's approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Finance administration, Andrew Dawson.
We have four items on the agenda tonight. The first one's a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rates for 2020. Administrator Shaw would take us through this.
Sure. Every year we have to go through a public hearing process to set our tax levy. And so this is the hearing portion, and then after that, council will be able to consider a motion or an ordinance to approve. So at this time, citizens may be heard on the property tax rates proposed to be set. In accordance with the Hancock Amendment, the tax rates are set to produce the revenues the budget shows required. The levy rate is then determined by dividing these revenues by the current assessed value. And so this, as you see up on the screen, is an excerpt out of what was published in the Democrat as required. And are the rates that going through the Hancock Amendment calculations are allowed for the community or for the city to set. And so at this time, if there's anybody that wants to comment, please step up, state your name, and be heard.
We need a motion to open the hearing.
I guess that probably would be good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
In the opposition, most of your votes.
Second.
All in.
All in.
Okay, so now council, after that hearing, can consider the ordinance. And this ordinance is required to set the levy. And without setting the levy, then you cannot collect that property tax. So it's a pretty important ordinance to us every year. And once, assuming you pass the ordinance, then Don will take that and certify it to the county clerk, which will then in turn send it on to the state auditor, and then ultimately the state auditor will say, or certify them back to the county clerk if they can charge those or assess those taxes.
Any council of state? Arlene, want to read your ordinance, please?
Bill number 2020 dash 141, an ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2020 for the city's today.
Second.
Second.
All in. Chris?
Aye.
Bill number 2020 dash 141, an ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2020 for the city's today.
One passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes. Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
All in.
Next item we have on the agenda is a financial update by Finance Director Jennings. Finance Director Jennings, you have the floor. It's Matt Walski that you can actually hear me. But again, state tax has been surprisingly good in the first two years. The company has opened a 5.2% increase over the time last year, which actually reduced the cost of funding in the new part state tax in the equation, or I'm sorry, at least after we were in parts on the equation. And we're about 6.2% from the year overall, and 1% increase in the profit margin. The budget for a change was that, I could look up, it's pretty amazing even. No, which that was.
Any council questions?
The second.
It looks like we're on a positive trend, you know, we didn't have any idea where we're going to be just three months ago. After Kevin and I did a little research on what August means to us in the past, and we discovered we ranked that number seven as a revenue. We would think that would be top revenue generating month, but it turned out to be number seven. Thank you, Bill.
If I may ask one question?
Sure.
What roughly use tax up so much so far? If I'm reading this right?
Yeah, and of course, some of that is the 8 cent increase for the Hecker Community Center. But then even beyond that, it's up significantly. And the use tax just keeps climbing, and I caution everybody on that because it is so construction dependent. We have so much construction still going on in the community that a good share of that comes from construction. So, you know, we are blessed that it's, that the economic tide is still going up, so.
And hopefully we'll have more construction.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
The third item we have is two related ordinances. The first one is an ordinance amending the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year regarding the sidewalk projects. The second one is approving an agreement between the city of Sedalia and SNA Equipment Builders for sidewalks, gutter, demolition disposal, and replacement and repair. So what's happened is, is we've, we're looking good financially, so we've released the hold that we had on the sidewalk funds that council had allotted at the beginning of the year, $200,000. And then we also have some chicken seal that we're not going to be able to get to. So we're taking that, those funds from the chicken seal projects, moving those sidewalks, and getting rolling on some sidewalks, replacement.
Kevin has before you, when we did this water main replacements and the sidewalks that are at the point where they need to be replaced. And that's part, we had much of it, $200,000 for when we did this water main replacement through sidewalk repairs. And that wasn't going to get anywhere near what we needed to do. So we kind of laid this out. And we realized we have sidewalks, hopefully we'll continue rolling this through each budget year, and we'll do the same process. We're taking, providing this concrete and having this construction up done. And we'll start rolling soon, I hope, and continue through into winter time, and then we'll start again this year. Any council of session? Kevin? Read your ordinance, Arlene, please.
The first ordinance is bill number 2020 dash 142, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 regarding allocation of additional funds for sidewalk project.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2020 dash 142, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 regarding allocation of additional funds for sidewalk project.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Crowe?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor? Second ordinance is bill number 2020 dash 143, an ordinance approving and accepting of bid agreement by the city's today jury and estimated equipment and wellness cleanup city for sidewalk surface demolition slash disposal and repair and replacement.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Bill number 2020 dash 143, an ordinance approving and accepting of bid agreement by the city's today jury and estimated equipment and wellness cleanup city for sidewalk surface demolition slash disposal. Is it being replaced?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry, I can't hear her, my ears are.
No, she's still muted, Councilwoman Foster. You're still muted, Councilwoman Foster.
I can't hear anything, guys, I'm sorry, did you call me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I, after Andrew spoke, I couldn't hear anything at all after that.
Okay, okay.
I can hear you now.
Yeah, this is the second reading, roll call vote on acceptance of the bid.
Yes, I got that part, yes, I'm sorry, but yes, I say yes, please, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about my voice here.
No, I'm sorry, it's not your fault, thank you.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Crowe?
Yes.
All in favor?
Everyone, I think it will help if you speak into the microphone, it will help her here.
Fourth item on the agenda is an ordinance to motion, an ordinance regarding municipal property insurance. Kevin, just take us through that.
Sure, this is the renewal of our property insurance package. And it's, Arlene Sylvie and Jason Myers have been working diligently, working with various insurance agents and underwriters, and have pulled together a property insurance package that is in the same terms, or essentially the same as what we had had last year, or the current year, for a $950 increase in the premium. So I was well pleased that it, you know, it went up a bunch last year, but it didn't, didn't go up again this year. So we are still working with the underwriter to try to increase the liability, or the limits, I'm sorry, on earthquakes and flood. Right now, the limit as stated in the policy is $5 million for a flood or an earthquake. Well, if we had an earthquake and it took out multiple buildings, the $5 million is not going to go very far. So we're, we're trying to find either a reinsurance package or a conditions exception, I can't remember exactly what they called it, but the terminology, but trying to increase the limit on those two policies. Other than that, are those, yeah, those two events. Other than that, it's essentially the same insurance we have currently. It meets the requirements of our indebtedness, and so staff recommends approval. And really, all you need is a motion and a second and a voice vote to accept.
Motion to approve this.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Your vote, Sam?
No.
She said aye.
Yeah, she said aye, so I think it was affirmative.
Jeff Lehman, public works.
Public works tonight, I have three items to bring forward. We have a change order number two, 2018 Water Systems Brutal Contract Number One, $3,948. This has to do with probably the final client of this particular contract, the manager. As we were doing this, as we had identified before, we found things that need to be fixed and run in anticipation. So this is also pretty adjusted for the final fall costs increase. And that came at that $3,948. What is that total contract in the end of 2000 for $2,481,505? That shit was out this contract.
Do we have any council of session? Read your ordinance, please, Arlene.
Bill number 2020 dash 144, an ordinance approving and accepting change order number two by the city's today jury and head of year excavation, excavating a city for 2018 Water Systems Brutal Contract Number One.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
All in.
Bill number 2020 dash 144, an ordinance approving and accepting change order number two by the city's today jury and head of year excavation, a city for 2018 Water Systems Brutal Contract Number One.
One passage.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Second.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor? My second item has to do with nothing to the city code, the relationship of sewers. It has to also go along with the Department of Natural Resources committee. What this really is, is, let's always correct your public work standing now, so if I get this wrong, you can step in here. But as we go through this, we have a committee process of people that are commercial watering their sewer systems. They have to be treated, and that's a process that they have to have a commitment. Under that commitment, there are requirements, and they also have to match with our side with DNR's rules and regulations. So in the process of doing this, we decided to submit the report, we approved this, and the draft changes to our code to DNR, let them mark it up and then bring it back to us, so that's doing something tonight. And whether or not I have to change it again, that would confuse us, the annual, our customers, all of us. I wonder if I get that right?
Let's turn it out here, the chief saying yes. Any council of session? Arlene, want to read the resolution?
Resolution, non-see, I wait. A resolution authorizing the solution of an evaluation of industrial, retailing, local land, and throughout that day to city come, you're letting the sewers and local landers sit in the third department of natural resources.
That's an actual resolution, I believe, isn't it? Most of you approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
As been said, my lifetime is a no parking sign area, and it has to do with east side of South Quincy, West Broadway, North half block. We had a year, most of you were in military, South Quincy, Broadway, and Seventh Street is very narrow. And studied and brought to our attention, and the advisory commission has recommended we put a no parking on that one side of the street. If we park on both sides as it is right now, we still have an issue getting our great power trucks in the park to be. But we need to take care of this and put a no parking in that area, a duty of its has to do with taking the board commission before paying the rest of the six, and that's what we're recommending.
Any council of session?
We have one flaw on this, I'm right on, I'm joining you, Frank. I went through there and I 100% agree with it. As you park cars on the west side, always park there. If you park on the east side, it's six and a half feet, it wouldn't get through. The cars are still parked around the half block. I would say that is why you should make a full block in the parking, because people that park there on the east side now, there's a wall, it's safe enough. Car, car side, my side across the street, but there's a gap there as opposed to the corner of Broadway. So just about, but there was that little block set that way.
At that meeting, there was some discussion about that. Chuck Lethbridge owns that property on the east side, and he agreed that he would put those no parking on his side. And then the next half block is owned by Dan McGrath. He didn't think it was going to be concerned, but that was the concession.
First of all, I understand that the cars that I park there now, they're going to be up the block, and we're asking you, I'm going to have cars.
It's interesting that when it's people park there, there's plenty of room that the owner of that building, as in this back, they always like to park.
I would think that if we, well, if we pass this, but I see another area, we'll back again before that permission, and they can recommend the rest of the label that you're bringing to these.
Yeah, I don't think.
Then at the university.
Brenda, do you know, do you know why they stopped there?
We've done this in the past. Their primary concern is vacuum traffic up on Broadway. Because if one car turns in, another car is already blocking it, vacuum traffic up there. With a half block, we're able to prevent the vacuum of Southwest to turn the fire truck. So you can have a good one length spacer available for the rest of that half block. Oh, we did that a block over, I believe, this location.
We had the one by the, or right off. Yes.
And we haven't had any problems since then. It also leaves enough parking in that immediate area, because it's a whole area. So if we take out basically three parking places, we take the whole block and change it. And that does then begin to impact how.
So we will continue tomorrow. Melis Perkins? Arlene, read your ordinance, please.
Bill number 2020 dash 145, an ordinance establishing no parking sign on each side of South Quincy Avenue from West Broadway to our north for a half block.
Second.
All in.
All in.
Bill number 2020 dash 145, an ordinance establishing no parking sign on the east side of South Quincy Avenue from West Broadway to our north for a half block.
All in. Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamon?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes. Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
All in.
All in favor? Number two, all ahead for the city. Thomas Oldham, public safety, please.
All right, we have two items tonight for public safety. The first one is a resolution in regards to the reasonable options for our current retirement benefits. And I could give a fantastic showing to the Riven's and Parkers about our social security system. But I think the better person to give you the most information would be John O'Brady. So, John, let's take that presentation.
I hear the presentation to you in regards to social security, not so much social security, but loggers and fire department as they're looking at future options. One of the tendencies of loggers is what type of a, uh, program that you're going to offer. And that's depend upon whether or not you offer social security or not. Social security is just a little bit more complicated, and I'm going to give you just a little bit of an overview of what it is. Social security actually, uh, for those who do not have social security right now, actually operates through section two-one-eight, uh, with the social security administration system to provide medical coverage and/or, uh, Medicare coverage to government entities. So, it's kind of highly regulated. The responsibility falls back to the Social Security Act in interpreting its provisions as well as interpreting section two-one-eight in the agreements and the modifications. All funded determinations regarding that state section, uh, two-one-eight agreements are governed by federal law and are made by the Social Security Administration. Now, the state is responsible for doing this. Uh, they are responsible for administering, they're responsible for maintaining the section, state section two-one-eight agreements throughout the state with all municipal entities as well as active liaison between the state and local governments, employees and federal agencies as well. Now, currently, the fire department operates under its own retirement systems, not covered through social security and the retirement act, uh, the SSA. They don't have those social security benefits available to them. Now, the federal law was enacted in nineteen eighty-six that made public employees hired after March fourth, March forty-first, were required to be covered by Medicare. And the fire department personnel at that time were given that benefit as required by law. Now, the key point to think from this, that the social security benefits for any public employee retirement group that not presently a part of the social security system, it can only be activated by a section two-one-eight agreement between the state and the Social Security Administration on behalf of the employees. It's a very formal process. Uh, there's a requirement, any municipality has an incentive system for a coverage group and entering into this agreement, uh, under the SSA under section two-one-eight B four, B six, you don't really, really want to know that. They're required to conduct a referendum, uh, of the employees to see whether or not they want to be covered by a specific retirement system, whether, uh, what's the word? Now, the referendum process, it's all governed by the Social Security Act. Uh, certain minimum conditions have to be maintained, as outlined in the act. And the act requires the governor, or it doesn't need to certify that the conditions were met. Now, for that referendum, it's effective, the majority of the, of the active members of the retirement system at the time it started had to vote in favor of it. So, if it's a no vote, it still counts as a no. It has to be a majority of those active members voting yes. If the vote is favorable, then all current and future retirement, uh, system members are covered. Now, once coverage is provided to members, a continuous nothing that then occurs, which may result in terminations such as basically the entity resolves or they change employers, that doesn't fall into social security system. Now, the process we have to go through to make this work, if the council so approves it, is you have to adopt a resolution to conduct a referendum on whether they want to, the fire department personnel wants to join the social security system or not. This resolution, if approved, goes to the Missouri Office of Administration, the Division of County. And the Office of Administration, a higher than notice of referit, uh, referendum, with distribution to the other Texas employees. Now, because we have somebody in military personnel, that vote can be scheduled no less than a hundred and fifty days from the date that they send it down here to start this whole process. And it has to be passed by a majority of all those affected. Now, we are to prepare, if this is the case, we have to prepare a ten, fifteen days of notice of all the eligible members in that retirement system at the time who can, to vote, and they establish a voting pool. Now, the Office of Administration, in conjunction with the Social Security Office, the political subdivision, they organize and they'll conduct the educational workshops for the eligible employee during the hundred and fifty day notice period, and that's what their job is to do. After that, these eligible employees, uh, before that referendum, they're supposed to be supplied with the, uh, election ballot. That ballot devised by Office of Administration. There's specific rules on how that ballot is handled, they conduct the whole thing to protect the voting rights. And at the conclusion of the election, basically the OA, the county summarized the election ballot and the eligible members assigned a test to, in order to the political subdivisions. Now, if the referendum is successful, they shall furnish a political subdivision, a partially completed plan and agreement document that comes back to council showing, you know, that you want to be a part of the social security system and all the, uh, process by which it's involved. It's also approved by, I'm going to hear by the IRS, uh, so that we got everything, you know, taken care of altogether. Actually, agreement signed, uh, modifications forward to the Social Security Administration. And after they execute it, they notify the political subdivision, the coverage has been accepted, and the subdivision will initiate payment of applicable taxes. Now, if they don't vote in favor of it, uh, the social security guards account has to be documented to the Office of Administration's office. And there will be no modification of the state's agreement, that's for sure. I've been here for about forty-six years, it's never, it's been talked about many times, and looked at many times, but it's never been taken to a vote of the firefighters as long as I've been here. Uh, there are certain, if they have since they had a social security system, or since they had a retirement system, there are certain penalties, not so much penalties, but if they work another job besides here, uh, they will not get full social security from that job because of the fact that they are in a political system that's not a part of social security. Whereas what's holding a government office act. And teachers, you know, I mean, teachers pension systems or like that, all the pension systems that are not a part of social security or like that. So, what we're bringing for you tonight is a resolution to see if the council wants to proceed in the matter of trying to take this to the firefighters to vote on this particular system, you know, joining the system or not. I know that's a lot technical material, but it's all governed by the state. It seems like, it's kind of unusual that we have to pass a referendum to even start the process, but they won't even start. The whole process is educational campaign to firefighters unless this referendum is sent to their office and start this group.
Any counsel to session?
Yeah, let's see, uh, let's see, if the, if the social security is just going to cost, they say, on average, more or less as part of the company. It's kind of a hard subject, you know, and tell me if anybody talks about it a little bit more than I can, because there's benefits of both ways. So, you can address the financial situation that happens because we're making contributions now, and all that has to be kind of taken into consideration.
Yeah, the, the short answer is yes, uh, because we'll have to match the social security and all of that. Uh, the, the longer act, the quest, the longer answer is, um, it depends on what we do with the loggers and their current retirement plan. The loggers, uh, you can, you have another option available if they are not covered by social security, which is the two and a half percent versus the two percent per year credit for their, for their loggers. But that is only available if they, uh, if they are not covered by social security. So, if they're not covered by social security, we'll probably pay more in loggers than we will. And, but then if they're are covered by social security, we will probably pay less. So, the net effects, I, I, we don't know. I mean, it, it, it will net out something closer to zero, but it, you know, if, if, uh, uh, there will be an effect.
If this helps, um, anyone that's already retired has to stay, both they are available to loggers, or are they also transitions in social security?
Well, no, and, um, if, we're not, at this point, what we're looking at for loggers is, is, uh, is two things. One is us to move all new hires to loggers. And then the second part is, is to look at what options we have for the current employees to move to loggers. Um, uh, but the, the old system right now is, is still in place. People that have retired on the old system are still going to be funded out of the old system, not, not out of loggers. Now, if we freeze the old system and don't allow any new entries, and we make some other changes, we can then petition our, our ass loggers to take it over and manage it for us. Which I think there's good benefits for doing that, but we've got to make some changes. And that's why this is a little bit, in my opinion, a little bit unusual, is, is we have to pass this resolution before social security administration will come in and do the calculations and come in and, and show everybody and do the education on what the effects will be. You know, it, it's, it's not just clear cut and dried, okay, if I, if I'm covered by social security, I'm covered by social security and this is what my retirement benefit's going to be. So, um, so we got to pass this before we can really find out the information to make the real decisions on. So, that's, that makes any sense whatsoever.
Is, is there a reason why this is come to us at this time?
Uh, yes, I mean, the, the, um, uh, again, the decision on what the options are for loggers, um, is, is to me dependent upon this, this deal. And so, if we're going to go into loggers, uh, I would like to have this question answered. And then we will know whether or not we can do the two percent or the two and a half percent loggers. And, um, and it, you know, it's a long time period, it's a hundred and fifty days that you, you know, mag, or minimum, that you got to wait before you have the referendum. So, now, the, um, uh, the firefighters, uh, the union is, they've asked us to look at that, uh, as far as, as do employees. I think it's a, it, long term, I think that's a good thing that, that we would want to do, or at least look at it and, and approve, or approach that subject. Um, you know, the, the current pension plan is sixty-some percent funded right now. And, uh, the, uh, uh, the return on investments has never been what it needs to be to make that. So, we just keep throwing more money at it. And it's, uh, you know, it, it, it's never going to be big enough to earn what loggers does. So, I think loggers is going to be in the long term more efficient. So, uh, whether we have loggers, uh, manage the fund, or we move new employees, or we give the opportunity for some employees to move, there's all those kinds of options, but we can't really, we don't know what the options are available to us until we have to answer this question.
Okay, so is this affecting only our department?
Yes, yeah, the fire department is the, the police department at one time wasn't covered by social security, but the, they are now. Everybody in the city is now covered except for the fire department. The fire department is the only department we don't cover.
Right.
My, correct, right?
Well, I think, I think number, uh, social security system is a little different than the firefighters. There was an option way back, loggers, uh, they moved into, you know, actually, into loggers. And then they're all now, as of two years ago, managing, or a year and a half ago, managing the whole place retirement system. And they're doing very great stuff there.
Chief, did I misstate anything or?
I think you're pretty close as far as what I know about this. There's a lot of questions I have. I think, you know, all the amount of people that have been signing quite simply, like you stated, until we get this, this vote, nobody's even talking.
Yes.
So, so, uh, if, uh, if fireman works five years from retiring.
Mm-hmm.
And, and he started paying in social security.
Mm-hmm.
And he retires in the fire department, but he's eligible and all social security, which is five years of paying in.
I can't remember the timeframe for that. Yeah, that, and that's part of this, is, is, okay, the social security will look at that and educate each individual on what those are, when those timeframes are and those kinds of things. But until we pass a resolution, they won't come in and do that.
Uh, because, you know, usually, uh, when you go into social security, you're a stadium thirty, forty years.
Well, and most, as you know, most firefighters have a part-time job or a, a moonlighting job, whatever you want to call it. And they pay into that, but they get no benefit out of it. This way, if, and they'll, that, those calculations are all part of what we want them to do. So, it's come in and tell us the exact effect.
Any other questions?
I call for the resolution.
All in, read the resolution, please.
Resolution ninety-one, nine. A resolution of the city council of Souda, Missouri, authorizing the recommendation to the members of the fire department to join into the social security system.
All in, approve. Second. All in favor? I have a poll.
All right, the final item, recently, state legislature passed a bill that changed requirements for protective headgear for motorcycle riders and passengers. Included in this state legislation is the prohibition of local government such as us to regulate motorcycle headgear. Therefore, staff are committed to killing our existing code related to these restrictions to maintain compliance with the regulations.
Any counsel to session?
I have, I have a question. Uh, I'm like, that's cool. Four or five years ago, I was riding my bull's beater, and I was stopped by a big shelter, and I wanted to go. And I told him, I said, you know, state, it'll require, we already come into the forty-nine cc, and he said, you're, and I said, right, that it's state or the, the city's district requires you to do it. So, now, what we're asking is that the state is, is having a no helmet law, so that's what the city must be going with. Am I correct?
Well, yes, uh, that's correct. And then on top of that, the, the, what the new legislation that the state passed, which becomes effective, I think, the twenty-eighth, is that it prohibits the city from having, uh, any, interrupt any requirements for headgear. So, it all falls through the state statute now. So, um, so, yes, the previously was the city ordinance, or the city was able to have an ordinance to restrict headgear, and now we can't.
Okay.
Oh, you got to wear that mask and you're like.
Yes.
Mask and.
Counsel, my wife. Okay. Okay, uh, read the orders, please.
Number twenty-two dash one forty-six. An ordinance to fill in section fifty-eight as sixty-four of the double coordination facilities in Souda, Missouri, eliminating the protective headgear requirement for motorcycle operators and passengers.
Second reading. Okay. All in. Uh, the polls?
Number twenty-nine dash one forty-six. An ordinance to fill in section fifty-eight as sixty-four of the double coordination facilities in Souda, Missouri, eliminating the protective headgear requirement for motorcycle operators and passengers.
Final passage. Second. No call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Boston?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
That is all for public safety. Thank you, sir. The mayor's villain, Andrew Dawson.
First item on the agenda is an ordinance to check in the agreement between the city of Souda and PDAV players for their professional services regarding the comprehensive plan. Now, what the comprehensive plan does is it's, uh, gives us a legal basis for making zoning and planning decisions. It also contains a vision for the city that we can all unite under, in a, a direction to go. Uh, the, there was a selection committee forum, like, was comprised of staff, council, and also members of planning and zoning. We went through, I think it was nine proposals, uh, narrowed that down to four, with four in-house interviews with each of those firms, all highly qualified, and then came to the decision of PDAV. I got some of that.
Yeah, planning and zoning also recommends, uh, approval of PDAV.
Any other questions from the council? All in, read the orders, please.
Number twenty-two dash one forty-seven. An ordinance to recommend accepting the contract. An ordinance to permit and accepting a contract for professional services by and changing the city's today in the third, and P G A V planners at all states, for a comprehensive plan for the city's today in the third.
Second reading.
Hold on, favor? Hold on, here. Votes?
Number twenty-two dash one forty-seven. An ordinance to permit and accepting a contract for professional services by and changing the city's today in the third, and P G A V planners at all states, for a comprehensive plan for the city's today in the third.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayman?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item we have is a, uh, ordinance granting a special use permit to Matt Otten for the property located at twenty-one thirty-five East Seventh. Uh, Director Simmons, could you take us through this?
Yes, we have an application from Matt Otten, twenty-one thirty-five East Seventh. Um, he was seeking to build a garage slash warehouse storage type of building. Uh, the property is owned by a one-single-family residential. We heard from neighbors at the public area on us that were in opposition to that use of the property. Uh, with a, you know, single, with a garage without, all right, we got that. In our one-single-family residential, in order to have a detached garage, it required a primary residence on the property also. So that's why this went the direction of the special use permit, so that the use of the property would follow the owner, uh, and not be in perpetuity. So, at that point, planning and zoning recommended denying the special use permit.
Any council to say?
This is a point of honor, of order. I do believe by the call, when, when he did this, it was a denial that came from planning and zoning. But he had to go on the actual request, so that the, the man has not yet.
Yes, because, because the citizen made the request, it has to go through the process. So it, uh, it goes to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning recommends to council, but then council has the, the final authority. Now, there's, there's, uh, I mean, really, two ways that you can deny the request, if that's what you want to do. Uh, and then only one way to approve the request. One, the only way to approve the request is to pass the ordinance. Uh, to deny the request, you can, uh, not consider the ordinance. If it doesn't get a motion to, uh, uh, to, uh, to read or to pass, then, uh, then, then, you know, the ordinance fails. And so you don't, by essence, don't pass it. The other way is to go ahead and read the ordinance through the second, and then on the roll call vote, let the roll call vote, uh, be what it may, either, either passed or it goes down. It takes five council members to pass through.
I have a quick, thank you. Well, now, now can, now can Mr. Otten request to have that rezoned?
Yes, he could request that to be rezoned. Uh, the other thing is that he can, he can build a, something that complies with R-one zoning. So he can have a detached garage, uh, if he built a primary structure as a house, as a residential, uh, to comply with, with residential. Now, this came up during the planning and zoning meeting, and it's the neighbors that were against it, they were against him building anything. Now, we cannot deny him from building anything. I mean, he, anything that fits within the R-one zoning, he, he certainly is candid. Um, but, uh, the R-one zoning requires a, uh, a ancillary building has to have a primary structure associated on the city.
On, on R-one zoning, it requires a minimum, I believe, of six hundred and fifty square feet for residential, so you still build six hundred and fifty square feet residential with the garage detached, or there's no, 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 no. And does that have to be just primary residence?
No, it just has to be a residential, correct.
It could be a rental unit, it could be a primary residence, it could be a residence with nobody in it.
Could be a weekend cottage.
Okay, so if, if he wasn't allowed to construct, they build it, and he made it sound like a house?
Well, it has to, yes.
It could be a residence.
It, it has to be an actual residential. I mean, you, you know, you can't just put the facade on it, but.
You're not a sport worker.
Yes. Yeah, six hundred and some feet of it have to be actual residential areas. And then the rest of it can be, as long as it meets the rest of the, you know, setbacks and all that, then he can build what he needs, but.
That call for the ordinance?
Read the ordinance, all right, read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance granting a special use permit to Matt Otten for a personal use garage slash storage building on property located at twenty-one thirty-five East Seventh Street in the city's today in the third.
Second reading, thank you.
Hold on, favor? All right, votes?
Number twenty-two dash one forty-eight. An ordinance granting a special use permit to Matt Otten for a personal use garage slash storage building on property located at twenty-one thirty-five East Seventh Street in the city's today in the third.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Alden? I'm sorry, the, the, yes?
I want the yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Ross?
I am voting yes, but I talked with Mr. Otten about this, and he was speaking about trying to get it rezoned again.
I think we can see a shot there. Okay, so you're voting in favor of the special use instead of the, okay.
Wyman?
No.
Mayman?
No.
Alden?
No.
And Dawson?
No.
So that's three yes and five no.
The next thing we have on the, uh, agenda is a special use permit for William Harvard, eighteen oh five West Ford. Uh, Director Simmons, could you take us through this?
This rezoning is a, it was a perfect property in, on South Seventh Street, where Street is limited going east. But if you remember where it was built on, it happened during the severance, people were down from that. Um, there was a detached two-bedroom garage that was built probably fifteen years ago. Um, he's requesting a home application for a business license, R-one residential, for home occupied business. Uh, he's going to be detailing on it to be able to re-get the location. We checked it through government courts also for the water discharge, and it was fine with that volume. Uh, the neighbors were all supportive of it, in fact, wrote letters to the city supporting this special use permit. So, I'll just give a favorable recommendation of planning and zoning on that.
Any council to say? All right, read the ordinance, please.
Number twenty-two dash one forty-nine. An ordinance granting a special use permit to William Harvard for a property development on property located at eighteen oh five West Fourth Street in the city's today in the third.
Second reading, thank you.
Hold on, favor? All right, votes?
Number twenty-two dash one forty-nine. An ordinance granting a special use permit to William Harvard for a property development on property located at eighteen oh five West Fourth Street in the city's today in the third.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Please, yes.
Second, thank you.
Richardson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayman?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
All in favor?
Fourth item we have is a rezoning application, uh, from C and E Excavating. They're going from R-one residential to M-one live industrial. Director Simmons, do you have anything on this?
Um, again, this is an application, as you recall, we record two C D S venue and their frequent flyers. So they're asking to rezone, uh, that area where their business is located up on Harbor Island for R-one residential and home life industrial, this street is pretty depressed.
Any questions from the council? All right, read the ordinance, please.
Number twenty-two dash one fifty. An ordinance granting a reselling application by C and E Excavating Incorporated for property located at one oh four East Ham, one eleven East Ham, and two oh three East Ham in the city's today in the third.
Second reading, thank you.
Hold on, favor? All right, votes?
Number twenty-two dash one fifty. An ordinance granting a reselling application by C and E Excavating Incorporated for property located at one oh four East Ham, one eleven East Ham, and two oh three East Ham in the city's today in the third.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ross? Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayman?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
So, I have your honor. Thank you. Record license, all right?
We are two new members, we should review the old page. The new two, the chance to show management to extend the law. As we are three staff, we need to look at the drinking, selling sale. Increasing law enforcement, law enforcement, Wyman, thirty-three, three, four, seven, five, one, million, road, and Smith of the service, for a temporary remit. And the renewal allowances for jury, client, agents, the supplemental lobbying, forty-four, one, west, concert, navigating, place of the drinking, selling sale, and Timothy Holland, we need this rush hour halftime, thirteen twenty-seven limit of healthy sleepers in the state.
Would you approve in law? Second.
Hold on, favor? All right, votes? City council members, uh, city minister, want to make any comments? The city?
I would just like to comment on the, the, uh, the acoustic panels that you see up and around. Um, you know, Mr. Desmond, it's one of his final, um, final acts, help us to, uh, get those installed. But, uh, I don't know if you all noticed, but I think the sound is much better. Uh, so they've done that job, but even if they didn't help the sound, I, I, I think the, the, uh, the pictures are great and a great addition and really dresses up this room. And, um, thanks, John, for, um, spearheading that and getting it pulled together. So I think they look great.
It's crucial to a bunch of beer. And they don't look great. Uh, so anybody in, in the audience, I'd just like to make a comment tonight. Please come forward, say your name.
Mr. Otten, uh, going to go at twenty-one thirty-five East Seventh, for a special use permit. It is known, R-one, it's high rent, no one's ever been to a home. Hundred feet away from the river tracks, constant on the floor. Some of the complaints from the neighbors were that it would make the neighborhood unsafe. Business, our family business is half a block away, uh, there are eleven hours a day. So half of my day, half of my life is spent half a block away. So it's not like I'm undependant to the property. It's vacant, the people have a lot of problems with the deal, too, in nineteen eighty-three. Nothing's ever been done with it. There were weeds, it's all, building here, it's got trees, it's mowed weekly, probably to maintain. Um, I just don't feel like anyone's ever developed one. So, I thought it was a chance to do some development, generate some tax dollars for the city. It's two blocks away, on Ninth Street, this is on Seventh. So, again, it's not like it's unattended, uh, vacated or anything like that. It has constant attention, uh, maintenance, things to do development. It doesn't work, correct? Well, it's dirt, so I don't like that. Uh, I don't, I don't see anybody developing any of that work. Residential work, so that was the, uh, purpose of the, uh, application. So, I'm pretty sure it's rare. I didn't really get a lot of feedback as a resident, hearing, of scope. I was here to answer any questions, I just couldn't, it was just a job, so. Tell the intent of the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Otten. Anybody else? Thank you. Do we need a motion to?
Uh, I don't know.
I think, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider ordinance.
So, what, all of them?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider ordinance.
You voted no, right?
I voted no.
Yeah, okay. So, I've never been through this process, but it's my understanding that, uh, when somebody in the majority of the vote has moves to reconsider, then the ordinance is reconsidered.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ann, am I steering you, steering us incorrect?
Well, um, can you all, first of all, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, first of all, the problem that there also is with Mr. Otten's application for the special use permit, it is not one of the accepted uses that is listed under the statute, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the ordinance that we have. So that's one, one issue. Um, the second issue is, no, is you are correct, Kelvin. If you have someone in the majority wishes to, who, um, have voted against it now wishes to reconsider it, that was the majority, the council can take that up. But it, again, will need the full process, again, of a, a motion and a second, and go forward, um, with the reading of the ordinances.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor? So, I'm sorry, uh, so Ann, how do we correct that the, that it's not one of the allowable items? Do we need to change that? Or, or do they just need to understand that it's not one of the, the, uh, items in the code? And add that to the code?
Well, normally to add to code, we would have to do, uh, because it's involved in the planning and zoning section, you'd have to have an advertisement run, you'd have the hearing in front of planning and zoning to get their recommendation on it. Um, and then they bring it forward to the council. So, so we're beyond that, that point right now. I mean, the council has the ability to, I guess, as, um, to ignore your own ordinances, um, politely saying.
Okay. So if they pass this ordinance, what effect does that have? Does it allow the special use?
It's going to allow the special use, even though, and then we'd have to, at some point, clean that up later with the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission and bringing it back through council. But you're allowed to change. Um, it was noted up for tonight, so it's proper to consider all possibilities.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm not a second person. The, I'm not very solid property, I understand the, the citizens or the neighbors, like, I'll share a topic there. But when I hear there's no one else, I'm like, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you, it's all money, spend a million dollars, and you can have so many. It's only that they care, they care that I'm not, sort of, being, not like they have, not for, um, um. As a matter, point order, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you're always considered with special ordinance.
always consider those special units, particular piece property, uh, there are several members of that Planning and Zoning Commission that did guide by these properties. Construction of this building, if you did, if you did guide by it or you were fine with it, but one, it does eliminate some visibility on the street, okay? And that was another reason that we were kind of looking at not doing this particular thing, and this is truly a residential area, it's not a warehouse area, that was the other point that is being raised, so, John, if you want to add anything more, that's about later on.
You know, we all, the planning and zoning, we know the public hearing, that public hearing closed, and then we have further discussion, uh, it's, I think, I'm just, I'm worried about it already, that we addressed that issue. And I think, uh, no, any issues, what you could do, what you could do without, without all of it.
The, the other reason why I applied for a special use was on the recommendation of John D. in the office.
Yes.
I initially wanted to buy her commercial, and if I need to go to special use permit, for what reasons, I don't know, but my initial intent was C1, and so, you know, I applied her, her right online, seeing that what I'm applying for does not qualify for a special use permit, so, I think I steered in the wrong direction, because C1, I wouldn't be able to construct a building I want to build, so, I don't know if there's a discrepancy there, but that was my initial intent, for the way I read it, the, the file online was that, you know, preceding structures does not have any vacant residential, we have some, that's, I don't know.
So, as long as Mr. Otten is using his facility, as if, if we prove it tonight, it'll maintain that special use permit, if he sells it, he cannot sell that special use permit to anyone else, and that's, um, and apply back to the council again. Now, he can still come back and ask the planning and zoning commission to rezone the property, that's correct. So, which, we have a motion on the floor? Thank you. Well, actually, I, I'm not sure that that motion takes anything, he's, he was of the affirmative, so, um, are, are in the majority, so that the, the ordinance gets reconsidered, because... You voted no? So... Yeah, he voted no, which was in the majority, so, so the, the ordinance gets reconsidered now. Uh, Councilwoman Boggs asked, uh, uh, can it be tabled now? And so, I, I don't know what council's, uh, pleasure is, is if you want more time to consider it, it's been reconsidered, so if you want to put it on the table to, um, uh, or postpone it until next meeting, get more information, get more options, that's a possibility, or you can reconsider it now, so... So, we're saying, Kelvin, the motion's on the floor, we do not need a second for reconsideration, but this, this is no doubt. Well, yes, no, that's, that's my understanding, is, is if somebody in the maj, in the majority vote, um, motions for reconsider, the, the ordinance gets reconsidered, um...
There's just, um, a little bit more information that I'd like to get, um, before going back in and, and voting yet again. I know that you said, what, what type of building is it, how, to me, how big is it, what are, what are you going to be doing with it, what are you storing in it, that type of stuff? I, I'd like to have that kinds of information before I move into sorting.
Well, now, all right. I think the motion needs to be withdrawn and tabled.
You need to draw a motion? No, the motion to reconsider has to be done to get rid of the previous vote.
True.
Okay, so that's been done.
Okay.
Uh, so now, you've got the, you've got the opportunity to either vote now, or you can table it, or...
Well, we haven't had a vote on the motion, too.
Anne, I don't believe we have a vote on that, do we? The first, I mean, you don't have to pass that motion to reconsider, it just has to take one of the people that voted in the majority to reconsider, right?
I don't quite agree with you. I think it takes a motion, and then it also takes a second to reconsider it as well, and then you, then you have it on the table, then you have it on the floor again, and they, and at that point, after you have those two, then you can have your motion to table and get a second to that and see if you get somewhere with that.
So, does the second, so does the second require, uh, being of a person that voted in the, uh, majority? That's why I don't think you need a second.
Well, it's been to be unusual that you could have just one motion that brings it back, you generally, um, have to have two, a motion and a second. I don't think it's the possibility that it has to be somebody that was of the majority on the second, it certainly has to be somebody that moved in favor of it. So, I mean, you have, who was the, who was the councilman that moved to, to reconsider?
Wyman.
Okay.
And he was, he was in the majority vote as a councilman.
Was there a sec, all right, was there a second to his motion to reconsider?
Councilman Cross did, but he was not in the majority, he was in the minority vote.
I don't know, Kelvin, I don't know the pers...
Say that again.
Go ahead.
Councilman Cross was, Kenny asked if could he simplify it by changing his vote, and I don't think you can until it's been reconsidered, right?
He cannot change his vote.
Correct. Okay, now, um... Okay.
I believe, I believe you need to have a second to Councilman Wyman's motion.
Okay, we did, but it was not in the affirmative, is that okay? Or in the majority, is that okay?
I believe so. I think the, the first one that has to count is the one that was in the majority that now wishes to change his vote.
Okay, so do we need a voice vote on the reconsidering? Or just a motion and a second?
Yes, or, or you, yes, and then, if you wish to have a motion to table it to the next council meeting, that would be the next motion.
Okay, so, all in favor of reconsidering? All right. Roll call, please.
What, what are we, now, are we doing here, roll call, or the motion to reconsider?
That's what Anne, I could, is suggesting.
Oh, you're voting.
And Councilman Cross...
We need a five, we need a five, I'm gonna, just reconsider, I think, so I think we need a vote for reconsider, if so many minority are in the pile, I'd order to move a five people over, now, one, and I, my motion for reconsider, I don't know, I haven't really heard about second, and if we do second, if someone second that, then we go right to roll call, or roll call, the other motion, doesn't make any sense to the motion, we do that, to the roll call, or we take it.
Yeah, that would be my feeling as well, or legal counsel is disagreeing.
Okay.
I...
So, right now, we'll take it. Doesn't seem like that's a kind of that, we'll need to reconsider it, if there's a, if the council don't want to reconsider, then why you have that?
Yeah, if you have to have a majority to reconsider, then it kind of mutes the issue of reconsidering.
That's right, why don't we get that settled, okay? So, Anne, Anne, we're saying you have to now do a roll call vote to see if we're gonna vote?
Folks, I can, I cannot hear very well what the past discussion you just had was on. Was, is someone speaking to the microphone and tell me what you want me to answer?
You, uh, has, has that microphone now in front of him, he'll tell you?
I am, so, I'll reconsider, I first, I don't need to second it, and I have to buy two people, but I don't, who is sitting around, or not, you know, you want to do a roll call vote to decide whether you have another voting vote?
I, I think the purpose of the roll call vote was to be able to distinguish between the, if they have the ayes or the nays, if you have a majority of you wishing to reconsider it now, it's been moved and seconded, so, you can have a roll call vote to distinguish between those saying aye or nay, if you think you can distinguish it without a roll call vote, that is, that is, that will work as well. I could not, I can't hear you all, so I can't distinguish one way or the other, other than by a roll call vote who voted in favor and who voted against. Does that make any sense to you all?
That's, hey, Kelvin, so what's our, uh... Council? So, we need, like Anne indicated, we need a roll call vote. Currently? Yes, that's what, that's Anne's direction. Arlene? Roll for roll call vote?
Lehman?
No.
Holden?
No.
Cross?
No.
August?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
So, I don't believe on whether to allow him to...
No, you're voting on whether or not we're gonna re-vote?
Oh, yeah.
And Wyman, coming in, Foster, I'm sorry.
No.
And Wyman?
Yes.
Your motion?
What is, what's... So, the motion to reconsider failed.
That's correct.
Okay, that's signed. We're gonna go into a closed-door session?
Motion closed, motion adjourned to closed-door session. Thank you.
All in favor?
I propose.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, um, are you where you can get an email?
Yes.
Okay, I will send you a link to a closed-door session.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, could you sign it at the minister's...